Okay, good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to our Maui Planning Commission meeting of Tuesday, October 22, 2024, specifically in regards to the South Maui Community Plan. Jackie, would you be able to take roll call, please?
Yes, Chair. Thank you. Okay, Chair Thayer?
Yep, I'm here.
Oh, and would you mind saying where you are if you have other adults in the room with you? Thank you.
Uh, yes, I am at home alone, and I don't think anybody's going to be coming in.
Thank you. Vice Chair Thompson?
Good afternoon, aloha to all. I'm here at one plaza, one main plaza, 619, with AP2467. Others from the community are joining me here.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Lindsay?
Aloha, ma'akako. I am here at my house in Wailea. I am alone.
Thank you, Chair Lindsay. Commissioner Decos? Commissioner Decos?
Chair Thompson's asking for a copy of the stuff now.
Commissioner Decos?
Oh.
Did we lose me, Commissioner Decos?
We can hear you.
Okay.
He was saying he can't talk. He was like making motions he can't talk.
Okay, he's here, and are you at your home alone?
That's right.
He's got a thumbs up.
Okay, Commissioner Ward?
I am here, and I'm home in my office. My husband is here, but he is not in the room, nor will he come in.
Sorry, Commissioners Hippolito and Commissioner Kialoha are excused absent.
Okay, thank you. So on our agenda tonight, we have, sorry, for this afternoon. Oh, housekeeping note before we get into our agenda. We announced it earlier, but I'm sure many of you are aware that this evening, the administration is holding their budget session for South Maui. And so in anticipation of many of you wanting to attend that meeting as well, we are going to cut this meeting off at 5 o'clock to give everybody the ability to participate in that meeting this evening. And so back to our agenda, we have Section 3, the Growth Framework. We've gone through Section 3.1, 3.2, and we are looking at Community Plan map in sub-areas 1 and 2 in Section 3.3. Although we also have Section 3.4 and 3.5 listed on the agenda, so we can take testimony on any of these items. And with that, unless the department has anything to present, we can go into public testimony.
Chair, present.
Right.
Oh, sorry. Karen, you said something?
I was just confirming there's nothing to present from the department.
Okay, thank you. So we can go into public testimony. Does staff have a list of people signed up to testify? If in person, we can do them first, and then we'll go online.
Chair, we have Brad wishing to testify.
Okay. Brad, please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Good afternoon, Chair Thayer and Commissioners. My name is Brad Anderson. I'm an employee of McKenna Golf and Beach Club and writing today to provide testimony within Section 3, more specifically Figures 32, 37.
Chair, sorry, I cut off for a second. Can you restart this testimony? Sure, yeah. Can we restart his three minutes? Mr. Anderson, please restart your testimony.
Thank you, Chair Thayer. Good afternoon, Chair Thayer and Commissioners. My name is Brad Anderson. I'm an employee of McKenna Golf and Beach Club down here on the south side. I want to provide testimony for Section 3 of the South Maui Community Plan, more specifically Figures 3.2, 3.7, 3.16, and 3.17, which include portions of land designated as rural residential area within the McKenna Resort property. I respectfully request the removal of two specific gulch and drainage designations within the rural residential areas shown on these maps. I have submitted this written testimony as well with all the details, because some of the maps get a little detailed there. So I've submitted written testimony earlier today. The gulches and drainage ways that I'm most comfortable notating within these maps are the name streams of the area, including Waipau, Kiawenui, and Papai Huaiva. I first moved to McKenna in 2013, and I've often monitored the drainage paths and physical storm effects to McKenna property. As part of our responsibility here at McKenna, we regularly conduct site walks and after and during large storm events, including the, I think, the last big rains we had here were earlier this year in January and February. In addition to our assessments, I've spoken to some of the legal descendants of the area and local residents to better understand the history of the gulches. These individuals have shared the information regarding which gulches and drainage ways have been identified by name and which experienced sporadic storm flow throughout the year. The gulches that are not named and are not known to carry flow in the recent past are the ones we are requesting to be removed from the current plan maps. Thank you for your consideration, my testimony, and for your continued dedication to the draft SMCP. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission for the testifier? Commissioner Lindsay?
Hi, thank you for your testimony today. I was wondering, you said these are the three specific ones, but you were maybe suggesting there are more? Is that a possibility?
I'm familiar with three of the name streams. There's Waipau, which breaks off into North Waipau, South Waipau, Kiawenui, which also goes by the name, it's slipping my mind right now. On some maps, it shows up as Kapoia Kea. Some of the local families down here just refer to it as Kiawenui. And then Papai Huaiva is the third stream in the area.
And you want to remove them because they don't flood? What is your reasoning behind that?
The name streams, they do carry water during storm events. The other marks on this map are not name streams, and I don't know if it's a matter of them just being depressions in the topography or how they made it onto this map. But we do monitor all the depressions and gulches in the area, and the ones that I'm requesting to be removed do not, or have not shown any signs of stormwater in the last decade or so that I've been here.
Okay, and that's in your written testimony? We didn't receive it yet? I didn't, well, maybe. Sorry, I read it.
I sent it, sorry, I sent it maybe like an hour and a half ago.
Okay. So I don't think we got it yet, but thank you for your testimony. No more questions, Chair.
Okay, any other Commission questions for the testifier? And I guess Dale, if you have a question, please wave your hand real big so I can see you in the small screen.
Thank you, Chair, and I have testifiers here too, so when we get around to.
Oh, okay, okay, sure. Yeah, now we'll do the in-person testimony and then go back to online. But Commissioner Ward, did you have a question for the testifier?
Nope, no thanks.
Okay. All right, so there being no more questions, thank you for your testimony. So we do have people signed up online that I see, but yeah, let's go in person. If you can name off the names of everyone on the list, and then go for the first one.
Okay, this is Brian Banks.
Brian Banks. Today, we are here to present a joint testimony for Wailea Ekahe, Wailea Ekohu, Ekolu, Grand Chempis, and the Palms. Representatives from the properties are in attendance here with us. These four Wailea properties have a total of 782 owners. They've been providing short-term rental services continuously since they were built 30 to 50 years ago. You heard our individual testimonies before. We will not repeat those.
Excuse me for a moment, please. Sorry, Brian. I just want to make sure that Commissioner Decos is online. I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we just want to make sure because we don't want to lose forum. Commissioner Decos?
Oh.
Maybe I've logged off and maybe trying to log back in.
Thank you for catching that. Staff, do you have his number? Would you be able to check in with him?
This is Gino ISBC. I am texting him right now.
Thank you.
Chair Thayer, this is Ignacio Planeriggi. Mark is back on. Chairman Decos is on.
Oh, thank you.
Sorry, sorry, I was having tech difficulties. I had to reboot. I should be good now.
Did you hear Brad Anderson's testimony?
I did hear Brad's. I didn't hear the follow-on.
Okay, we haven't started on the next one. Or, well, we just started on the next one, but we can have him restart. Did you have any questions for Mr. Anderson?
I actually did, that's why I realized nobody was.
Oh, okay, can we have him back on? And sorry, Mr. Banks, we'll come right back to you. So go ahead, Commissioner Decos, questions for Brad Anderson?
Yeah, thank you, Brad, for your testimony. You mentioned you're monitoring the gulch. I was just wondering on what capacity, if that's something you do professionally, or?
No, we don't. It's, we do have ocean monitors. But as far as, you know, from the current storm flow within the streams, this is visual. If we're not out there, we try to get out there during the storm events. If it's the day after, we have a perimeter fencing that goes down through all of our gulches, and so we can take a look at the debris field. So we take photos and kind of monitor where the debris is seen, which ones are dry, which ones have moisture and debris in the bottoms.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, it's going to be more technical.
No, but I'm just curious, your ocean monitors are just personal? Or you do this for a living?
The ocean monitors are from Akos. It's a hired professional consultant. That's part of our commitments, I guess, from a past change in zoning requirement from McKenna Resort does.
Okay.
So they, I mean, do they just monitor ocean quality at the mouths of some of these streams?
Okay, thank you, thank you for your testimony. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you. I do have a follow-up question, actually. You've been observing these since when, did you say?
I first started employment here in McKenna in 2013. I was here for about seven years. And then I left for about four years, and then I returned about a year ago. So in my absence, the Land Stewardship Department was stood up, and they've been monitoring it. And then when I got back about a year ago, I'm usually out there with them, helping.
Okay, and so your call for removing these gulches and for keeping the others is based on this past 10-plus years of observation?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we just don't see any storm water in them. I know there's portions of, earlier in the South Maui Plan that requires a 100-foot setback from the tops of these streams and drainage ways.
Okay, thank you. Any additional questions from the Commission? Oh, Commissioner Ward?
Chair, I do. Thank you, Chair. Brad, we're actually in Wailea in the process of doing a similar type of process of doing storm monitoring, brown water running, algae testing. If you're interested, I'm working with Hui Akah Waiala, and it's directly with Tova Chandler. And what we're doing is we're actually reporting the information directly into their team, so we have one central database of information. We're also doing water quality monitoring as well. So if you're interested, you can feel free to contact the planning department. They have my contact details, or I think they're online some more too.
I'm sorry, it's supposed to be questions, not.
I'm sorry, you're right, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Just a reminder, yes, questions of the testifiers, not dialogue.
I forgot, it's been a long day.
Yes. Okay, so we can go back to in-person. Brian Banks, and you can start your three minutes over again.
Thank you. My name is Brian Banks. This is a joint testimony for Wailea Ekahe, Wailea Ekolu, Grand Chempis, and the Palms. Representatives from the properties are here in attendance. These four Wailea properties have a total of 782 owners. They've been providing short-term rental services continuously since they were built 30 to 50 years ago. You heard our individual testimonies before. We will not repeat those. Today, we are here to officially submit for the record our joint request for a modification of the Wailea map in the draft South Maui Community Plan, page 81. We have provided the current map as well as our proposed map. We have some copies here, and we can deliver them to you as well. The first page is the map from the plan with the four properties identified. And on the second page, you see our proposed changes. So this will be delivered to you as well. So in the draft South Maui Community Plan, these properties are categorized residential. We respectfully request the designation of these four properties to be changed from residential to resort hotel in order to enable them to continue to offer the services they've been providing all these years. Please see the maps we have provided, and we can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you for your testimony. Any questions from the Commission for the testifier? Okay, sorry, did you say you already submitted written testimony on this? Or you're about to submit written testimony?
Yes, I've made the written testimony with the maps as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All sign-off for the questions, thank you for your testimony. Is there anybody else signed up online? I mean, in person?
Yes, we have others here. Next, looks like we have Christian Chan coming in.
Aloha, all, thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'll be really quick. I just wanted to make a plug for the written submission and testimony that was given to Commissioners. I would really appreciate you all reviewing it and forwarding any questions along to myself. I'm representing Wailea Golf and our proposal. So welcome dialogue about it at a perfect point in time when planning is on the agenda. Follow.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission for the testifier? Okay, Singnan, thank you again? Anybody else in person? Nobody else in person?
Nobody at this time, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will go online now. I believe the first one signed up to testify is Mike Moran, followed by Johan Lal and Pete Sullivan.
Aloha, Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for your volunteer service. Another long day for you guys. I wanted to express how important the land that's identified as the Pialani Promenade, the Land Use Commission, still goes back to the original name of Ka'ona'ulu, how important it is to the community, what is eventually developed on that land. Our community, as far as I can tell, was unaware of any action plan for that when it was sprung upon our community somewhere 12, 13, 14 years ago. And so we organized a public meeting, a public forum with the PA Community Association to get input from the county and from anybody else, what was happening up there. And we were told it was going to be a huge commercial mall which was being developed up there. And it certainly was not what our community wanted, and we had zero input. As far as we know, it's continually been owned by an outfit in Dallas, Texas. But they have had a series of people representing them to speak to the community. And the first group that they had was a commercial outfit from Irvine, California, who came in with a very strong, aggressive attitude. And when the community questioned getting input from us, their representative responded, "Well, when your community wants to put up millions of dollars like we have, then we'll listen to you. Until then, we're going to proceed." And they were quoted in the Maui News at the time with this. Well, that inspired the owners down in Texas to pull those guys off. They said, "Oh, we fired them." And we said, "Well, they said they were the owners." "No, no, they were never the owners. We're the owners." Sour from reality. So then they had, and new representatives came in with a more business-like approach. But they continued to say that they were going to develop this mall on this land.
30 seconds.
And I knew less then than I know now, and I still don't know much. But when we looked into zoning, and it was for our one commercial, we said, "Well, doesn't that mean it has to be mostly warehousing?" We asked that of a county official, and he said, "No, it doesn't have to be."
Time, time's up.
So we continued for years and years with this. And I should stand up so you can see my shirt, which says.
Can you sum up in a sentence?
Yes, the closing sentence is build housing, not walls. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the Commission? Okay, Singnan, thanks for your testimony. All right, so next up is Johan Lal, followed by Pete Sullivan and Harry Lake.
Hello, Johan Lal, testifying on behalf of myself. I wanted to testify on 3.3. And I did submit written also. Oh, but first I should address the gulches again. So I was looking at those gulches as Brad was talking. There's not that many in the area I believe he's talking about. And the thing is, if you zoom in on the aerial photo, you can see that those are pretty clearly gulches that have really different vegetation. There's gulf shapes. And I think that lack of flow in recent years doesn't mean they're not gulches. And the issue is going to be when there's those rainfall events that are really bad, like we just saw in a lot of the East Coast. And that's when it's going to matter, like how much you build up around these gulches. Currently, this is all open space. So once you build around them, there's going to be increased channelization, more flow going more quickly into those gulches, and it's going to really matter having those be preserved. And that's going to impact the people downstream, which includes a lot of Wailea and McKenna. So anyway, I support keeping the gulches. You know, on the 3.3 section, the Pialani Promenade area specifically, you know, I kind of didn't realize until I went and I drove around and I got pictures and stuff, that that's really where kids are going to be walking to school. The new Kulani Hakua'i High School is going to be connected to those Ohokai neighborhoods. And, you know, that people already use the shoulder of Pialani Highway as a walking route, and it's not safe, it's super narrow. And, you know, early in the process, we did a map, like a survey map called Social Pinpoint, so that the public could put in their input. I mean, it was mostly complaints and a few suggestions, things like that. But the biggest issue I recall was pedestrian safety. And then I think the second biggest issue was the need for housing. But people really want to be able to walk or ride their bike and be safe. And so that's really important when you're looking at these like 150-foot buffers. You only get one chance. Once those places are built up, you can't go back and put in the buffer. So, you know, these are all large landowners, and they can spare the 150 feet. So I really want to see that all those buffers stay. And, you know, it's going to save lives having good walkways, big enough to have spacing between the traffic and the people walking and biking with their strollers, big enough to have trees for shade so people don't collapse from the heat. Kihei is really hot, guys, like a lot of you are from the west side. So you know, when it's hot, it's hot. So anyway, please, you know, respect the seatback and the community especially. So, aloha.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions for the testifier? Singnan, I guess I have one follow-up question. You said you live in Kihei, right?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. All right, next up to testify is Pete Sullivan, followed by Harry Lake and Cal Chip Chase.
Hi, I'm Pete Sullivan. I'm testifying in support of the KOK Industrial Subdivision. I work with White Materials Recycling and Pete Sullivan Construction in Kihei. And so presently, up on the land that the ranch wants to develop KOK Industrial, we operate a 10-acre materials recycling facility, specifically inert materials, where we recycle rock, concrete, asphalt, all types of inert materials. And we recycled there since, I think, 2016, over half a million tons, probably closer to 700,000 tons of inert materials. And when you say recycle, we put it all back out into public use. The reason we can do that is because the ranch, we entered into a lease agreement with them on that land, and we had proper machinery to do that, and it worked out fine for us. But we're coming to a point where we wanted to do some other type of recycling there. And without the land being zoned properly and doing another special use permit as we're doing right now, it's not really feasible for us to look at recycling at the level that we want to because of the capital, the upfront capital costs for us. It just makes it, well, it creates a bunch of liability without understanding the future, what's going to happen with that land if it's left and the way it's zoned. So anyway, for us to continue to move forward and to invest in a property like that, it would really need to be zoned properly, not working on a special use permit. It doesn't work great for us. Anyway, that's all I have to really say. Thank you for letting me.
Yes, thank you for your testimony. Any questions for the testifier from the Commission? Commissioner Decos?
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Mr. Sullivan, for your testimony. And appreciate all you do with recycling, much needed here, especially with those types of materials. So the current zoning is special use, that where you're doing the recycling now, and you're saying to try to expand that, you might run. to try to expand that, you would, might run into issues.
Uh, yeah, the only thing that, that really works on ag land as far as recycling now, which still requires um, a solid waste permit from the Department of Health, would be green waste composting, and that just recently has changed. But any other type of recycling where you take in waste to do that on ag land, that requires a special use permit. And for us to, to get more deeply involved in recycling, which I think we all agree here, um, we really need that land zoned properly. Doing it in a special use permit creates too much question. Um, and again, just too much potential liability out there for us without a chance for us to look at the real return on investment, because too much stuff can go wrong with that under a special use permit.
So it's currently zoned ag?
Yes, it is.
And did you talk to the CPAC at all when they were going through the?
Absolutely. Um, I, I testified at the CPAC about this and uh, another testifier came back and said, "Well, that's what a special use permit is for." Well, I don't believe that. That's not really what a special use permit is for. I mean, partially to do uh, uses that aren't permitted on ag land, a special use permit. But it doesn't, it doesn't answer the question as to where we can make a viable business on ag land with all those other questions out there. There's enough hurdles in trying to recycle right now without uh, with being on ag land. And this, turning this into a an industrial subdivision with this location would be hurt. It's a, it's, it's a great spot. We've never had one complaint there. Um, you can't even see the work that goes on. So it's a, it's an excellent place for this. It's surrounded by other similar heavy industrial uses right now, and then wants out to our bear. Um, and yeah, it's a great spot.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Uh, any additional questions for the testifier from the commission? Commissioner Lindsay?
Um, hi, thank you for your testimony. Um, did you submit uh, your TMK or some other connecting information to, that we could address this for you?
Uh, no, um, to be honest with you, I, I knew this type of, I didn't really understand how all this works, to be honest with you. It's not anything that I do much. I'm just more of a doer and make that processes differently. I apologize to anyone that was part of the process. I'm happy to.
Okay, um, if you are able, or when you're able, can you please submit the TMK information? So it makes us easier to pinpoint where you are exactly. Thank you. That's it. If you have a chance.
I'm happy to do that. I don't do that in this forum. I do that to the planning commission, correct?
Well, um, you, okay. I'm the same. We are, we are the planning commission, so this would be the place to submit your testimony to.
Oh, but I mean, not on this meeting or send it to some planning commission? I don't understand.
I think you can send it to the department and they can get it to us. Um, and for a future meeting. Uh, but if you decide to testify again, you can also speak it to us and we can take note of it.
Well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to follow up on that for your information. So you've heard the previous testifiers refer to written testimony they've submitted. So you're, you're totally able to, you know, submit maps, diagrams, whatever um, information would help us locate exactly where you are on the map and then be able to make decisions based on that.
Okay, I, I understand that Rory was gonna testify, so I was tired of it. Anyway, okay. I'll, I'll do whatever I need to do.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Ward, did you have a question?
It wasn't a question. It was to say that Rory did submit uh, materials that uh, to, to address it. And uh, Mr. Sullivan, I'd be happy to uh, reach out to you and explain the process if you need me to.
Great, thanks.
Okay, any further questions for the testifier? Okay, Singnan, thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Uh, next up is Harry Lake, followed by Cal Chip Chase. And if there's anybody else online who wishes to testify, please um, indicate yourself in the chat.
Great. Uh, hello, Chair, there, commissioners, uh, and the planning commission staff. Uh, my name is Harry Lake, and I'm here on behalf of the project commonly uh, referred to as P'ulani Promenade, which is uh, an eighty acre tract uh, Maoka-P'ulani Highway between Kihei Gateway and uh, the new, relatively new Kulani Hakoi High School. Uh, I'm here to request uh, that our property be designated small town center. Uh, we request small town center for three uh, primary reasons. One, uh, it's consistent with a heavily litigated stipulation agreement that actually uh, Mr. Moran uh, participated in and was agreed to by the county, state, landowners, uh, designated interveners regarding our LUC approval, uh, which calls for light industrial uses. Um, understanding that the existing uh, county zoning, this, this would allow for the preferred residential uses that I think all of us want and that we actually agree should be built there. Um, the concern isn't residential, uh, per se. It's just that the residential uses or the residential designation would prevent us from doing uh, any light industrial type uses, which we believe would be in conflict with the current approvals. Um, so that's, that's our primary motivation. And town center, the, the, uh, small town center uh, would still allow for the residential uses that we, we hope to um, uh, be able to deliver as we get further in this process. Um, second, uh, it's, it's just the highest and best use for the land. The property is on a highway in between a non, two non-residential uses. Uh, the small town uh, center designation is uniquely uh, positioned to accommodate these transitional uses. Uh, it would also be logical, it would be illogical actually, to go from a highway to residential onto a small town center. Just would be backwards in terms of density uh, going away from, from a highway. So that was the original, um, I think, recommendation when the, when the plans originally came out, uh, when CPAC started. Uh, and then I also submitted some written testimony, which essentially was just an edited version, a hand, handwritten edited version of what we did during CPAC, uh, which in that meeting in July of last year, we actually came out of that meeting, uh, that meeting was just like this, specifically uh, speaking to uh, land use maps. And in, uh, coming out of that meeting, we actually had a vote that, that had the entire property uh, designated as small town center, um, as we're, as we're requesting. It wasn't until like the last meeting or so of CPAC that, in our opinion, wasn't properly noticed, but we didn't know it was being revisited, that, that the map that ultimately went into CPAC was, was inserted, uh, without our, our knowledge. Uh, and so we, we always knew we'd have to revisit the originally approved plan, the one that had the most participation and discussion surrounding it. Uh, lastly, uh, you know, it, the, the property is adjacent to Kulani Hakoi High School. Uh, we, we want to deliver a small town center. We believe a mixed use development is, is essentially what everyone wanted, predominantly residential. You just have to be across the street from uh, Baldwin to see all the students walking to the property. And we would create a walkable community for that high school uh, adjacent to, so you wouldn't have to cross P'ulani. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Um, any questions for the testifier? Um, I do have a follow-up question. So there's been a lot of testimony we've heard, both written and um, orally regarding concern for this being like an entirely commercial build out with not too much residential, and it sounds like the community is asking this for, for this property to be built out with like majority residential, um, uses. And so yeah, where are you on that? You know, can you give some idea of, you know, what the ratio would be? If this is entirely small town center?
If it's entirely small town center, our idea would be, would be predominantly residential. Uh, as it stands right now, it's all light industrial law, because that's what the uh, stipulated agreement called for. But given our ability to respond, and, and actually, I think a lot of interveners are saying that residential would be uh, allowed for underneath the stipulated agreement, we would deliver majority uh, housing. Uh, we're actually working with home builders to, to actually explore uh, that concept. And we think it's the right thing to do. We wanna do it, and small town center will allow us to do it while still not, while not being in violation uh, with the LUC approval, which was, you know, we spent over a decade working on so.
Okay, thank you for that. Uh, any other? Yes, Commissioner Lindsay?
Hi, um, people seem to be very excited about your project um, in both, in all ways. Um, so my question is, it sounds like you have had a lot, relatively a lot of community engagement. Is that correct?
We've had a lot of community engagement over the years, uh, you know, and so yes, we've, and we would love to have continued community engagement. Uh, we're trying to get our SHIPD approval, uh, so that way we can start doing the infrastructure and then start revisiting, you know, actual uses that would be consistent with the small town center, i.e. residential. And, and we can't wait to start that dialogue.
Um, okay, um, with that, um, have you, other than this litigation you were talking about, um, have you had a lot of support? Uh, my concern is that there is a vocal minority um, here, because we weren't all able to be there at the CPAC. Um, so I'm just wondering, like, from another perspective, um, even what are your thoughts? Like, what kind of support have you had or um, and or like negative thoughts? Um, but can you talk on that?
Sure. First of all, you know, the uh, we came in late, like uh, Mike Moran mentioned earlier, there was a previous developer that was engaged, and they proposed a a wholly different project. And so when we got engaged, coal partners, which is who I'm with, born and raised in Hawaii, my family's here in Maui, on Oahu, went to University of Hawaii, served in the Hawaii Army National Guard. This is my home. This is a, a, you know, this is a personal project for me. My, my alternative, the alternative use of my time is so, we're better, we're spent on something else. I mean, all of you have been sharing this project. This is really something that we do uh, on a personal level at a loss, because I, we wanna create healing. And we spent, I mean, you can talk to some of the community members, but uh, some of which may testify. But uh, we spent the better part of five years repairing damage that was done on a, on a project that was ill-conceived actually originally. And so in, in having those discussions, we try to rebuild trust. And I think we've done that with local families, uh, Kanakas in particular, but local residents in Kihei and, and trying to just rebuild the trust uh, that was severely fractured back in the day. And, and I actually appreciate Mike Moran not referring to the project as mega mall, because uh, it really wasn't, it, that's not the concept, you know? We're trying to get, rise to a little mature, mature conversation, which is, and, and going back to proper placemaking like Konaulu or P'ulani, uh, as we start to think about the vision of it. So it's taken a long time to kind of repair that trust. And we understand we have to, you know, continue to earn that trust. Um, but, and, and, and we spent the time to do that, and we're happy to, we're, we're continuing the dialogue. And we're listening, and we understand that housing uh, needs to go there. We just know that in order to make affordable housing, middle-income housing, housing supply in general on the site, which we think is perfectly aligned with, a mix, a mixture of uses is ideal. We, you know, right now, it's sort of a food desert on the north side or a Maoka side of uh, P'ulani. If you live there, you, you can't walk to anything, uh, to grab groceries, a bite. If you're a high school student, you'd have an after, after-school job, you couldn't walk to your job the same way I can witness around almost any other high school, uh, you know, across the state. And so, I, I mean, I was, I was working uh, restaurants when I was graduating from McKinley High School. It was important to me. I needed to do that. I lived in subsidized housing. This is exactly the type of project that I needed in order to go on to UH and onto Harvard Business School and, 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 and accomplish some things when I originated from subsidized living. And so, you know, that's exactly the type of community we're trying to do, a place where local families can, again, and I think we're having a big uh, convention at, at Blaisdell this weekend, to buy back into Hawaii. And so this is a Hawaiian-driven type uh, development backed by pensioners that are already invested in it, which I care about. And then, and, but uh, as importantly, we, we care about delivering a project that is uh, um, you know, right, right next to a, a local high school that honestly is losing enrollment, right? The elementary schools, we all know, local families, local Hana cannot live in Kihei the way they once could. And so as a result, there's diminishing enrollment in the high school, in the elementary schools, which is scary as we think about what's gonna happen at the high school, which just recently delivered. This project can help solve that.
Um, thank you for that. Commissioner Dicos?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Thank you for your testimony today. I think the Chair asked you this question. I didn't hear the answer, but the ratio. I remember seeing eighty, twenty. I've been trying to dig it up. Was that eighty residential, twenty? Is that the ratio you were thinking of, or what is the ratio you're thinking of?
We would love to have the majority residential. The thing that we're balancing is what can we, well, how much can we do there and still be consistent with the LUC approval? Um, and so that's a, that's a, that's a conversation we wanna have with them. If they said we could do seventy-five, eighty percent, we, I think that there's certainly an interest in doing that. I just don't know what the range is before we say, "Hey, it's not a, it's not a light industrial project anymore," you know? And so that's the one thing we're, we're trying to be conscious of. Uh, I do think that there's, you know, in my mind, I think fifty percent is, 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 is a layup. Um, uh, and then we try to push as, as much as we can uh, beyond that.
So you, you would prefer eighty, but you think in fifty, i- if there was land use change designation, eighty would be the prefer, preference?
Yeah, I think more the, the better. I mean, at some, we do want a mixture of uses, I'm not sensitive that is. And, and then we also wanna be consistent with the small town center, which there's some dialogue if it has to be stacked uses, or can we have a adjacent uses? Um, if there's some flexibility along that, then we could really push the residential component of the master plan.
Great, thank you, Mr. Lake. Thank you, Chair.
Sure. Commissioner Lindsay, followed by Commissioner Ward.
Um, one more question. Um, I think this was the project that most people were concerned about for the hundred fifty foot set, setback, um, because they didn't wanna see the commercial development on the street. I think from my understanding, um, they were kind of okay with houses, but um, not really okay with commercial. Um, is that within your plans and scope to kind of hide the commercial?
Yeah, so the uh, the current plan that was approved by DOT, LUC, and the, the plans that have been filed with the county uh, was approved a thirty-foot setback from our property line, which is setback from what people perceive as a property line. So, um, we would be in, 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 in alignment with a forty-foot setback, which gives us plenty of uh, of, of, of space to do the walkability. Our goal is to work with DOT to actually extend uh, the bridge that, expand the bridge that basically uh, straddles or goes over Kulani Hakoi gulf, so that way there'd be a walkable pathway from the high school to our property. Now, if they, if they can bridge over Kulani Hakoi, that'd be great, like separately. But, but right now, the, the, the path of least resistance is to simply expand a pedestrian walkway alongside buffer to protect the pedestrians, so they could cross and walk uh, from one parcel to the other. Uh, our property would easily accommodate that and then create a setback uh, that would, I mean, be more generous than anything else you see, certainly uh, n- north of us. And so our, our plan as it's approved is massive, is massive landscaping, and forty feet actually does that generously, more than, eh, than is currently approved. And still allow us to have a project that would actually pencil and not cut all the existing lots that were, are adjacent to P'ulani by more than half. Basically, all that unusable, which would put a lot more pressure on our ability to make housing, actually.
So, um, you're saying it's possible with a forty-foot setback to avoid the visual clutter that a lot of the testifiers in the past have um, noted? Um, commercial, commercial properties um, that other people were worried about seeing visually from the highway, I guess?
Oh, I, I wanna miss, I, you'll be, you'll be able to see the project, uh, going, I'm just saying the setback is, is sufficient. Uh, a hundred fifty foot, I mean, you could be just more distant, but it's not gonna make the project disappear. And it, and it'd be far better than what you see immediately adjacent to us, which is Kihei Gateway.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to put it into, because you want some visual, but not too much. And it sounds like the community, that was the motivator behind the hundred fifty feet, is you wouldn't see it. But with the slope, with everything, it's, I can't see it. Um, but thank you for answering those questions. No more questions, Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Ward.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you, Mr. Lake, for your, uh, testimony. Just for the context of the wider commissioners, um, can you kind of also maybe explain or, or provide context around where your location of property is to the tech center and kind of what that connectivity and how that would work in the community?
Sure, sure. So from the tech center, so tech part is, we're south of that. And so we're, we're basically Ohukai, which is when most people consider, hey, we're entered Kihei, you know, there's, there's obviously further south, but as you enter the gateway, uh, we're adjacent to that and, and immediately south of, uh, the roundabout. That I was probably more saying. Uh, but our project, uh, Konaulu, we're providing all the infrastructure that would extend Konaulu, Malka. And that would, that is currently designated by DOT as what would ultimately become the up-country highway. And so if we are to have a Malka north-south corridor, this would be a cornerstone of making that happen. This would be the intersection that you would go off on, on Pealani Highway to connect, which will hopefully be one, one day be a north-south collector, Malka of Pealani. Uh, and, and so it's a key infrastructure, sort of cornerstone for, I think, what would be, um, you know, um, sort of key for, sort of extraction routes in, in the future when we think about how we get people out of, uh, South Maui. Uh, this would be a huge infrastructure and we're committed to delivering, uh, the full scope of what DOT envisioned, uh, to make that happen. Uh, furthermore, you should also know, we, we also, on that infrastructure, uh, comment to answer your question, uh, we also did this, uh, the Miko substation, which eliminated brownouts that, if people recall, Kihei was having for a while. We actually dedicated an, an acre of land for them to do that substation. And furthermore, we'd be also as part of our infrastructure, we'd be realigning, uh, a key, uh, water line that cuts uh, forty-five degrees across our site, that, that provides water, uh, to South Maui that is aging. And, and I quite find the needs are replaced. So our project would actually help, uh, take care of that key infrastructure piece as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, any further questions for the testifier? Commissioner Dicos.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. You're a popular guy today. Uh, quick question, your, the parcel size?
Yep, so it's eighty-eight acres, uh, is, is a total. Eighty-eight is the total that we're talking about, seventy-five of which actually is under, uh, Pealani Promenade's ownership, uh, uh, the other, uh, thirteen acres is under HPL's ownership.
Okay, do you know how much? You know what, how much of the parcel is along the highway? Is it like a half mile?
Ah, I honestly, I'd, I'd have to ask Unamori, but I, that, that wouldn't be too much of a stretch, I think. I mean, maybe it's, it's probably less than half a mile, but, but it's a, it's a fair, it's a fair stretch.
And you say the, if you had a hundred foot, fifty foot setback, you said it would cut those parcels in half. It, it's just. Okay, so they're already divided parcels?
So we've got, uh, in the LUC, uh, plan, we had a map that we were sort of prescribed and, and so there's a sort of parallel road that's inside the property line that, that we've sort of committed to doing. Uh, and so that, that sort of sets the boundaries of those lots along Pealani Highway. And so we did an exhibit, I think, uh, two, maybe three meetings ago where we showed uh, the, the, the forty-foot setback and a hundred fifty-foot setback. And it makes, the hundred fifty-foot setback essentially renders the majority of those lots along Pealani unusable.
Okay, what, what are those lot sizes?
Uh, yeah, I don't know roughly. I think they're, they're roughly about acre lots. Um, maybe a little under acre lots, uh, but they're, you know, they're, they're, they'd be light industrial lots.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Appreciate it. Thank you, Chair.
Uh, any further questions for the testifier? Commissioner Lindsay.
Hi, about how many lots is that?
Yeah, uh, I hate to speculate. We have a hundred and forty-three lots altogether, uh, something like that. I'd say the frontage lots, maybe. I, I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I'd be, I'd be, I'd be guessing, but I don't know, between twenty and twenty-five, something like that.
Okay, and you anticipate those to be like more desirable because of the frontage or is there, um, yeah, would those be more desirable lots?
Well, I, I think, I think those would be desirable lots. I, I do think they would be more desirable lots. But I'm not, but it depends. For residential, I would say there'd be less desirable lots. Uh, for light industrial or commercial uses, it'd probably be more desirable lots depending on the uses. If we do, you know, for example, we know there's a huge need for dialysis, for example, in South Maui. My close family friend has to go all the way to Kahului to get dialysis, and that's a painful daily routine. And so, um, if we were to do a dialysis, you know, segment in, in this property, uh, or some sort of healthcare, uh, facility, because it's, if it's central proximity, that would be something probably you want to have a little bit closer to the frontage.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you.
Um, just to follow up on that, so your, uh, project plans had residential away from the highway, commercial closer to the highway, taking into account.
That would be our idea. Right now it's all light industrial lots, but that, that is our intent. And that's how we, we previously, when we did the town hall meetings, that's certainly how we presented it. Uh, uh, and that would be our, that would be our, our, our suggestion and recommendation, yeah.
And that's figuring.
Less dense as you get away from the highway, as you get away from the traffic, you get more residential.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any further questions for the testifier? Okay. Oh, Commissioner, oh no, you're not raising your hand, right, Commissioner Dicos? Okay. Uh, well, thank you. Thank you for your time.
Wow.
All right. Up next is Cal Chip Chase, followed by Leilani Pulmano. And a reminder to everybody, the chat is not a place for dialogue. If you have something to say, I would highly suggest you sign up to testify and then you can voice your opinion to everybody there.
Chair, Commissioners, Cal Chip Chase, thanks for your time this afternoon, after all your time this morning. Uh, I have four items, but I'll try to get through and I'll start where Harry left off, talking about the hundred and fifty-foot setback. That proposed setback impacts not only his client's property at the promenade, it impacts the six seventy property down at the end of the highway. And so on page five of my testimony related to six seventy, I included a map indicating the distance that would equal to a hundred and fifty-foot setback from our property line and compared it with a forty-foot setback, which we also would find agreeable. As you can see, the area or a hundred and fifty-foot setback cuts substantially into the Phase Two map that was approved by this commission. And specifically, it cuts into the area that's been designated for workforce housing, as well as the area that's been designated for village mixed use. I would submit that it's, it's not appropriate to modify the Phase Two map in this way and that the impact, particularly on workforce housing, would be substantial. I'll, I'll turn to another subject that Harry testified on, and that's the promenade property. He mentioned that the total is eighty-eight acres. He divided that between seventy-five and thirteen. My client owns the thirteen. And they sit Malka of Harry's property, which sits Makai and along the highway. In my testimony, the same letter, I go through the history of the Land Use Commission's decision and the settlement agreement with the intervenors, including Maui Tomorrow and others. Under that settlement agreement, if this commission leaves that promenade area in residential, any portion in residential, nothing will be built there. There will be no homes. The only way to facilitate the development of housing in that area is with a small town center designation, so that we can do the mixed light industrial residential project that Harry was discussing. Our intent is to do as much housing as we possibly can, consistent with the LUC's plan. But that requires small town center. If we don't have that, there is no housing in the area. There's, there's nothing except, well, there's nothing. Because now we have inconsistency among the layers and we have a settlement agreement that requires consent from all these other intervenors before we could change the land use commission's designation. Turning quickly to the six seventy property, the CPAC map is inconsistent with this commission's Phase Two approval. That's Exhibit One to my same testimony. Identifies the areas in which it's inconsistent with the Phase Two approval. We're okay designating specific areas in the community plan map. We just asked that they be consistent with this commission's Phase Two approval. My Figure One in that letter is consistent. The only difference between the Phase Two approval and Figure One in my letter is a removal of the water tank area. Otherwise, it matches it exactly and would be fine. The next item that I wanted to testify on is with respect to the undeveloped parcels in the sea level rise exposure area. Uh, specifically parcels seven one one four and seven one one eight identified in the department's letter.
Can you sum up in one sentence?
I could sum up in two, if that's all right.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Chair. With respect to those undeveloped parcels, we included mapping showing the elevation of those parcels and showing the extent of the sea level rise exposure area, which confirms that they are not within the erosion hazard line. That they're included in open space for entirely different reasons. And my last sentence, Chair, is with respect to the Maui Research and Technology Park. In contrast to the, the specific designations that are acceptable for the six seventy project district, that project district requires that it retain flexibility. The CPAC recognized that and left it in a special purpose district. That is the appropriate designation and should not be changed, again, in contrast to Walei six seventy. Thank you. Those are all my sentences. I appreciate the leeway.
Thank you. Uh, questions for the testifier? Commissioner Lindsay, followed by Commissioner Dicos.
Uh, can Commissioner Dicos go first, please?
Sure.
Thank you, Chair. Um, thank you, Mr. Chip Chase. Long day for you as well. Uh, first question regarding the, um, I'm a little confused and I know this gets brought up. So if the vision of a community plan is different from the land use designation, isn't there a way to, uh, correct that?
Sometimes. I would say the answer is sometimes, Commissioner. In this case, for the promenade property that we're speaking of in particular, there isn't an opportunity to correct that or to align them. Because there was a settlement agreement in which the owners of the promenade property agreed with all the interveners that the development would be consistent with the land use commission's decision. And because of that limitation, there's no potential simply to go back to the land use commission and correct or realign the designations. The only designation that is consistent, proposed designation is consistent with the land use commission's decision, that would still allow us to develop housing, is small town center. And that's why, why both Harry and I have pushed for that designation, both in CPAC and as Harry testified, for a time it was the designation in CPAC. But since it was changed, coming to this commission and asking you to make that change. It's also not possible with respect to the Walei six seventy property. If this community plan were inconsistent with our Phase Two, the risk at least is that we would have to go back to the planning commission to amend further our Phase Two approval. We just completed that two years ago and there's no reason to do that. I think to give planning tremendous credit, they have tried to align the mapping. I don't think it was a, a, intentional that they're disaligned. They simply are disaligned, just factually, as you can see in Exhibit One. And so all we're asking is to align them, not for anything different or special or to change anything other than the water tank, but simply to align the community plan with our Phase Two map.
Thank you. Uh, second question, similar to, uh, my question, Mr. Lake. The Honoulu parcel, how, how long is the parcel that, oh, along the highway roughly?
So if you look at page five of my testimony, you can see that figure set out. Um, it's not all that long in terms of the area between the edge of Maui Meadows. We have a hundred, a hundred foot setback from Maui Meadows. So from that edge.
See the three hundred scale? Is that, what is the three hundred?
You, your eyes are better than mine and I, I would be guessing, um, to tell you, that's probably per inch. Uh, if I had to guess. It's not that long until, uh, the road turns down until the end of the highway. So that actually is another reason the hundred and fifty-foot setback makes no, it has no purpose there. It's a connection from nothing at Maui Meadows to nothing at the end of the highway. Right? So it doesn't even make sense from a planning perspective. But those areas that you're looking at, XX is specifically designated for workforce housing. And that's our Phase Two map, so that is not changing. Instead, we would end up being forced to compress the workforce housing Malka.
So the, this is a six hundred and seventy acre parcel?
It is. There's a, a hundred and seventy acre preserve area and then there's roughly, oh, um, seventy more acres, something like that, and park and open space.
Okay, so the, the, uh, so if you had a hundred and fifty foot setback, and I don't know what that line, maybe it's a mile, half mile along that property line. I mean, we're probably talking five acres or something of the six hundred and seventy minus. So you're saying that, that, that you would, I think there's nine hundred or so, um, market homes and then something like two thirty affordable. You're saying that you would take that out of the affordable side of it. Those five acres of the setback, you would, you would take that out of what's dedicated to a formal house? And you couldn't shift stuff back in the six hundred and seventy acre parcel?
I guess I'm, I'm saying two things, is that I have substantially less than six hundred and seventy developable acres. Uh, because of the commitments to the preservation area and to the open space and park areas. The second thing I'm saying is I have a site plan. It was approved by the planning commission that designates certain uses in certain areas. I can't just move that around. And so the areas that you're looking at that have been designated are going to be the areas. And it happens that the hundred and fifty-foot setback, if it were imposed, comes out of those areas. That's a function of the approvals in the map.
Okay. I think I asked you at a previous hearing where the, where the housing was going to go and that wasn't set yet. You're telling me that's already figured out?
No, I think what, I think what you asked me was what was the ratio between single-family and multifamily? That ratio has not been set, but the locations were mapped in the commission's decision in November twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair.
You're welcome, Commissioner.
Commissioner Lindsay.
Um, Commissioner Dicos, I think, I think that was on one of his maps he submitted in prior testimony, um, the lots, um, with what the setback would look like. Maybe two meetings ago or something. Um, I have a question regarding, thank you for your testimony. I ha, and your written testimony especially. Um, I have a question, the same question I was asking Mr. Lake. Um, I am concerned with, um, a vocal minority not having support for the, um, small town center designation, um, having, I'm assuming been to nearly all of the meetings regarding South Maui area. Is that a good assumption?
That is a fair assumption.
Okay, um, that you maybe have a good climate temp check on, um, what the general community there wants. Um, can you speak on that, please, regarding small town center?
Yeah, I'll, I'll absolutely do my best. Um, what, what I heard in, in CPAC and what I've heard in, in East fora and, and elsewhere is that people want residential in the area. And what I think folks don't understand is that designating the area for residential in the community plan means there will not be residential developed because of the prior approvals, the existing approvals and the litigation. So when they advocate for residential, we're supportive of that and we want to do as much as possible. Where we differ, I think, is that most people don't understand that if this area is designated for residential, it will mean nothing happens. But if it's designated for small town center, then Harry and I will be able to develop as much residential in those areas as we can under the land use commission's order. Like Harry, if we were able to do eighty percent, we would do eighty percent. I don't know what we'll be able to do consistent with the order, but we will do as much as we are able to.
Thank you. Um, I also asked him about the Thank you. I also asked him about the the hundred fifty foot buffer intention was to minimize the visual clutter on the road. That's my main understanding. Is that is there going to be a lot of commercial on the road in your fifteen acre section? Yeah.
So on the promenade side, and where Harry's project is, we are Malca of Harry. So we're not impacted by the hundred fifty foot setback at all on that property. We're only impacted by the residential designation. The hundred fifty foot setback only potentially impacts the Honuuluah property, which being way at the end of the highway. And given that the half of it is residential, the workforce housing is half the designation that would be covered by the hundred fifty foot setback, the rest village mixed use, I don't see really any benefit from a visual clutter standpoint or any other planning purpose to having a hundred fifty foot setback versus a forty foot setback.
Okay, so from either visual clutter and planning perspective, forty feet is sufficient for that and like community interconnectedness, because that was the other factor, is the communities kind of being walkable to each other? And would that be sufficient for that? Or are there plans even for that kind of connectivity?
So two very good questions. So forty foot is, forty feet is ample for interconnectivity. And given the elevation, the area of the highway, and the uses planned, I don't see any benefit from a visual standpoint of forty feet or of another hundred and ten foot setback. It won't make a difference in how the project is viewed. We're currently finalizing our Phase Three approval, and subdivision submissions are working through those designs. So I don't know the degree to which it will ultimately have interconnectivity among all those, but the idea is to have a walkable community. That's why the multifamily workforce housing is situated near to the village mixed use housing. And the other single family residential is moved more Malca, so it would be more accessible by vehicles through the project rather than purely pedestrian traffic. But it's interspersed with parks and different little areas, some small parks, some larger parks, with the intention of, as Harry said for his project, really making a community out of it.
Thank you. No questions, Chair?
Any further questions for the testifier? I do have a follow-up question, which maybe I should have asked Mr. Lake, but I think you would be able to answer this. So the community plan, land use designation description for residential includes, let's see, public quasi-public uses and small scale commercial. So if, would these suffice for the Land Use Commission approval for P. Lani Promenade, or would that not?
In my view, my analysis, it would not. There needs to be a broader use of light industrial use to be consistent with the site plan that was approved by the planning or by the Land Use Commission. So I cannot see that designation being consistent with the uses that we're allowed to make under the Land Use Commission's order. If we could, I would be happy, right? That would be an easier lift for me to just accept a residential designation, and we predominantly want to do residential anyway. But we don't think so. Harry's analysis is the same as mine. We don't think that that would be consistent, and it would leave the parcels fallow. I'll note just on that, Chair, you'd mentioned residential allows the quasi-public uses. And so if we go back to the one difference between my proposed community plan map for six seventy and the Phase Two map, it is moving that water tank and leaving that area as residential. If we end up locating the water tank in that spot, the residential district is okay, because I can do public quasi-public like a water tank. If I leave it water tank and I end up moving my water tank Malca for better gravity feed, then I can't do residential there. And so we've really thought hard about what community plan designations would be appropriate, given the existing approvals, both at Promenade and six seventy and the plans for the areas.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, Chair.
Any further questions for the testifier? Okay, Singnan, thank you.
Thank you all.
All right, next is Leilani Pulmano, followed by Rory Frampton. Just a reminder, if there's anybody else online who wishes to testify, please indicate yourself in the chat.
Hi, good evening, Chair there and the Maui Planning Commission. I'm going to keep my testimony short in the interest of time, as I submitted testimony the last time we all met. And this is just regarding parcel, TMK parcel two three eight zero zero eight zero zero five. And this parcel is located in the subarea two in North Kihei, and we are requesting for the designation of industrial community plan. And in my testimony, I laid out three reasons why. And I'd just like to have that consideration at your next meeting when you're going to be taking this area up again. Thank you.
Any questions for the testifier? Okay, Singnan, thank you for your testimony. Okay, next is Rory Frampton. We don't have anybody else signed up to testify after Mr. Frampton. If you wish to testify again, write your name in the chat. Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Rory Frampton, and I'm representing Haleakala Ranch Company and Konaulu Ranch. I'm here to speak on two areas of change. The first is Kihei Malca, which is the result of a cooperative planning effort by both ranches that started during the early phases of the Maui Island Plan. The primary goal of the ranches is to address the needs of the community, and the most obvious need is for housing, especially for local families, and this area is perfectly suited for that. In my written testimony, I laid out the rationale and support of the existing designation, which can be summarized by saying it is a logical growth area. It is Malca of the highway, adjacent or near to the high school, the MRTP area, Kihei Charter School, and existing residential areas near Ohukai. We work with KCA on establishing policies to guide future planning. We're supportive of the original CPAC language with the exception of policy three point five point five regarding the Malca Collector Road, which I testified about at the last meeting. I've included suggested draft language in my testimony. If the commission is inclined to use the department's suggested language, we'd also like three point five point four to be amended as well. I'm open to questions on my testimony, especially as it relates to project-specific policies and our requested amendments, or transportation planning impacts open space for the size of the area. The second project area I'd like to testify on is Haleakala Ranch Company's request to designate approximately eighty acres above the wastewater treatment plant for industrial use in order to recognize existing uses and the appropriateness of the area for future industrial uses. The area is a logical location for industrial growth, given the surrounding uses, including the wastewater treatment plant, the Goodfellow base yard, and the existing construction materials recycling facility that Pete Sullivan spoke about earlier. So Haleakala Ranch is the landowner under Pete Sullivan's facility, and this would seek to line up the zoning for him. There is a shortage of available lands in South Maui for true industrial-type uses. This would support regional, commercial self-sufficiency for South Maui. We had initially presented this at CPAC, but asked that it be deferred for consideration at the Planning Commission level so that we could further refine the request and discuss with the community. We did a more detailed site analysis, which led to reducing the area from about a hundred acres to approximately eighty acres in order to set aside an area for stormwater management and also to avoid more difficult topography. We met with KCA and came up with suggested policies to address community concerns. To my knowledge, KCA hasn't formally agreed to the exact wording, but I feel we're in general agreement on the intent. This parcel wraps around the treatment plant and includes a strip of land immediately above the highway and below the wastewater treatment plant that would be left as an open space buffer to be used for stormwater management and planted with native line plants. I'm available, well, I can't cover much on this detail on these two projects in three minutes. I'm available for questions or could be available as a resource person when the items come up for deliberations, if the commission so desires.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions from the commission? Commissioner DeCos?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Rory. The, can you clarify, so you presented to the CPAC, they wanted more detailed information? And then, how was it left? Why was it not-
Yeah, the first the first time we presented it to the CPAC, I don't think there was sufficient clarity in what was being proposed, and it did not receive a positive vote. And then later on during the process, it was brought up for reconsideration. And when they brought it up for reconsideration, I asked that it be deferred so that we could consider it at the Planning Commission level, so that we could, we hadn't done enough homework with the community, and we hadn't done enough detailed site analysis. So we've done that, we've done a lot more of that now, and we feel more comfortable presenting this request to the commission. So, but we were on record in front of the CPAC stating that, you know, we wanted to go back, work with the community, and present it before the Planning Commission.
Okay, great. That'd be great to get a letter of support submitted from those groups. That'd be great. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Lindsay?
My question isn't to the testifier, but what he said was something like, I'll be available as a resource in the future. Is there an avenue for that for us in this process?
Planning Department?
This is Jackie. Yes, you can ask that they be a resource. And I believe if everybody's, if the Commissioners are okay with that, then that's all right.
And how does that work? Do we note them in advance? I feel like there's a few resources that we should capitalize on?
Typically, I see it done like after the person testifies, identifies their association, and then Commissioners will ask if they can stay on as a resource.
Okay, so that is available to us at any point during this process?
That would be ideal before they leave, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions for the testifier? Okay, Singnan, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Let's see, the last person we have signed up to testify is Vernon Kalani Kau. And unless anybody else wishes to sign up, he will be our last, and we might be right on time.
Okay. Hey, you guys can hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hello, this is Running Kalani Kau, testifying on my behalf. Just wanted to talk about, you know, just to you Commissioners, when we talk in community, the majority, the majority is KCA, Maui Tomorrow, Sierra Club. We all know that, and we know that that's the community, but the broader community of South Maui, they don't know a lot of what's going on, like Pilani Promenade, the whole story, the intervening and all that. They're only going to give whatever they want to give for their own agenda. So you guys just got to know that that's the community. And and just from my experience serving on CPAC, a lot of the testifiers in person have submitted letters. A lot of my short-term rentals too, yeah, short-term rentals that make their home here six months out of the year, three months out of the year, whatever that might be. So we just have to understand that when we talk in community, it's just that community, it's not the bigger, broader community. But you see the majority of the letters that come in, testimonies. Just got to be, just be open to that, who's serving the community, really. The other part I wanted to chime in real quick, I thought about the one fifty. I supported the one fifty setback for Pilani Promenade, and I really missed out the part where, you know, it's going to stretch out all the way to Wailea six seventy from north to south. And I personally went go up there a while ago to go look what that is, that setback, what that looks like. I, I think that's too far, one fifty. And if we're going to do one fifty, the whole Malca stretch of Pilani Highway from north end to south end, we're not going to get green space, you know, because where that water going to come from? It was an issue with Wailea six seventy of no grass, no moana, right? So we're not doing any of green, I mean, how that going to work right on that stretch? So we can do R1, but we don't have the infrastructure for that either. Yeah, so what that space going to look at one fifty? One fifty, so that's just my view, Commission, that, you know, I not, I supported the one fifty for that very reason of conservation and more more of a green space just for that Pilani Promenade, but I, I not supporting that anymore, only because that's, that's kind of far in. And knowing that it's going to go the whole stretch Malca-Pilani Highway, I never seen that anyplace else. And that's just me, so we can't just put it back as what the Planning Department is suggesting? We just put them back, the forty or fifty, whatever that is. That, so that's just my recommendation, mahalo.
Thank you for your testimony. Any questions for the testifier? Commissioner Lindsay?
Thank you for your testimony. My question is, the silent majority, you're saying that most of the people are not in support of the Pilani Promenade Small Town Center, or they are? I'm not really clear.
Majority don't support it, right? The small town center?
Well, I mean, that's what we hear, but we weren't in those CPAC meetings.
Yeah, so, yeah, okay, yeah, sorry, yeah, majority don't support it. And just so you guys all know, I was in this discussion from day one when Mr. Lake took over. And I was part of a working group with Dick Mayer, Maui Tomorrow, Lucian Dunne, KCA, Mike Moran, there was a whole bunch of us in one working group to work with Harry. And my experience was with that, you had different dynamics in a working group of not having anything on that parcel, having resident on that parcel, residential on that parcel, or what the cultural practitioners like myself and in that area would want, or even mixed use. So no one was on the same page, basically. Harry did as much as he could to entertain different versions of residential, mixed use. I've seen most, majority of that, those options that he provided. But the bottom line, the intervenors never liked nothing on that parcel. So you got to look, KCA wanted housing, they wanted res, that was their push. The intervenors did not want anything on that parcel. They didn't want anything. And we, I never liked light industrial, I never liked nothing on that parcel, but I, I hanged in there, because if we're going to have light industrial, then what can I do? As a Kanaka-
As a Kanaka-
Our environment-
Our environment or power department runoff and our
features on that parcel.
On that parcel.
That was my protecting as much as I could, if become light industrial part.
I'm having a hard time understanding you. Can you maybe talk slower or something?
You know what, I get one echo. I never had the echo, but now I get them, so maybe get more guys online.
Echoes, Paul, the echo's probably, can hear you now. Can you say that as a Hawaiian after that?
So as on Kanaka, I live right below, yeah. So I get, I'm next to, pretty close to Kalani Hakoi, so we know what happens over there. So with this Pilani Promenade parcel, knowing that, hey, if this guy can be a light industrial, I would stay involved because I like protect the features that's on that parcel. I like do as much as we can to make it, you know, the project where it's not so hard and where we can improve less runoff, you know, to Kalani Hakoi. Now, along those line, we have Konaulu ravine that runs through this parcel. Just know that this not no run all the time, because there was some changes Malca, yeah, so it's not as- Just know that this not no run all the time because there was some changes Maoka, yeah, so it's not as active on his parcel, Kaona Ulu Ravine. And most of, most of the runoff is in Kalani Hakoi, and this not one flood zone plain, like some, some people had said this is on flood area. No, it's not one flood area, it's flat area. So so when, what I trying to say is, you have mix, mixed feelings on what people like up there. I just like make sure that whatever goes up there agrees to the land the best we can. So just to be transparent with everybody, I work here with Harry to, to fulfill what, what, what we, what, what the majority wanted at CPAC in the vote now, that was in the vote to have res. I supported small town center with the idea of mixed use to have, my vision was possibly seventy percent and up on housing, if can, I don't know. But have some mom-pop shops there so that we don't need go any further south into Kihei, right? We can stay here north. We don't need go more inside. We can keep majority of that traffic here on the north side. And that was, this is just my place. So when you, what went happen at CPAC, if you guys know some of that, that action, we were gonna vote, we were gonna vote on one night on, on our draft. We never, we never got the vote. You know why? Because KCA, Maui Tomorrow, and everyone else in that Hui, that community, wanted to go another week or so just for change Pilani Promenade from small town center to res. That's what went happen. So I'm okay with that. We're gonna, you know, Harry gonna try, you know, we gonna try. I don't know if can, but we gotta try. What else? What else I get that? Tell you so. So the majority is, is that, that Hui, is that Hui, so.
So they represent, so what you're saying is that Hui represents majority of the opinions of the people in?
Right. And then, and then, there's some people from up country, you know, some people from up country in Kula is supporting no, no small town center. And just a quick one, Commissioner, on small town center, this is the same Hui that went support on small town center, dead center in the Wailea Wetlands in Kihei. If you know Azekas, yeah, that is all wetland central. So when we look at history, what went happen to South Maui? This is the group, this is the community that created South Maui. This is the, this is the community group that's still is saying we have one small town center in South Maui, and that's the one, that is the one that's staying wetlands right now. That is the one gonna be inundated with sea level rise, you know, so I just saying, if we can get more res in that area, because it would, it would supply the school. Because we know more the, the numbers in that school. And that school is sixteen hundred, it is made, it is eventually to sixteen capacity. And this is one opportunity that we can put some res next door that can feed that school, you know, so. Anyway, I hope, I hope I helpful. I just saying that the majority of the community is the same old guys, the same ones at CPAC that come testify. And for me personally, the majority of the community don't know what, what, what's being shared from KCA, Maui Tomorrow and you know, so I just saying. And, and just know, I see my friends too, we all do some stuff together sometimes and not sometimes, but me, I, I just look at the whole thing as a whole. I'm not just looking at, at his project, Pilani's project, where I look at the whole Moku, Maoka to Makai, and also the disconnect of even those in that community, we're talking about how our Moku went get cut in half, or, or not cut in half, more than cut in half. The same group, the same people that went slice up our disconnect from Maoka. So I just saying that maybe us Kanakas, maybe us indigenous kind of mindset people should get more involved in what that would look like in development or design even on, on further projects from here on out. I'm glad we have Department of Oevi because they gonna take a look at all of this too, how we can look at things from our Kanaka lens. We engineers, we know how to do things certain ways, but we also need help from our Malahini friends too, sometimes. So it's not keeping everybody out. It's just that we gotta be top of the food chain in the community engagement groups. We have to be more on the top of the food chain and not number five like where we stay right now.
So that being said, would you say that the Kanaka would prefer small town center in that area because of its proximity to things or not?
So that's me and a few others, not, and then there's a few others that don't want small town center or don't want nothing on that lot, right? So there's a few Kanakas here that don't want anything, and myself and a few others thinking maybe that would be the best fit, because if, if Mr. Lake is is doing some res, I'm sure we like more than fifty if can, right? Fifty percent? I don't know if that can work, but I don't like the light industrial. And if, and if there's a way that we don't put nothing up there, is that the right thing? I don't know, because we still getting runoff, yeah, from up there, so it's kind of tricky.
Okay, thank you.
Smart, smart, smart eco-development helps, right? That helps, especially next to Kalani Hakoi, and you folks know where that's there, right? So it's a, it's a challenge, it's a challenge. Thanks, thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. No more questions, Chair. Uh, thank you. Commissioner Ward, I saw you raise your hand.
I did, but the testifier actually responded to the question that I was gonna ask, that is it more of a subset of individuals that are having a specific agenda, or is it the wider audience, or the wider community? And the answer that it is a smaller subset pushing the agenda, it answered my question, so thank you.
Okay. And I just want to follow up, make sure I heard you correctly, Mr. Kalani Kau, is that you were open to small town center, but main thing is majority residences, residences going in?
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, if, because from, you know, I learn, right? We all learn, we all learn through CPAC. And then we like make change, yeah, later. Oops, you know, so, so I favoring that only because what I've learned that you can make mixed use. And, and along those lines, if you look where I'm at in that area, and I know traffic is, is on big, big problem for us, but imagine if I'm, I live right there and those guys on Ohukai, north of, of Kaona Ulu Gouche, we don't need go too much into south, you know, we can get some stuff there. And the mom-pop features that I like see is more like, we can get more stuff like ABC store kind of stuff, not a whole lot of grocery shopping kind of stuff, but, and not no big, big malls, uh, uh, Safeway kind, none of that. That kind, you know, and then maybe as the kind, something like we get at Saint Teresa Church right across the street off Le Po where you can live in the unit, and then below it can be your, your, your mom-pop store, and you can live upstairs kind of thing, like Takamia back in the day, Takamia store. So that's why I favoring that, but it all went back to res. And we can do res too, but I don't know if we can do res on the entire parcel. I don't know.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, any further questions for the testifier? All right, Singnan, mahalo again, and I will allow one last testifier who put their name in, Mr. Albert Perez. Are you still there?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, great. Yep, I'm having trouble with my camera, et cetera, so I'll try to be quick because I know you folks want to get out of there. I'm just gonna talk about the Pilani Promenade and the Land Use Commission Order. I have more to say, but I'm gonna try and just focus on that. So there is a misconception, or I don't know, maybe it's misinformation, that no residential could be built there because of the 2020 Land Use Commission Order that affirmed the use of that property as an industrial subdivision. So it's, it's like half the information. This is essentially false. So even, oh, and that only small town center would solve it. Even small town center would require a modification of the Land Use Commission Order in order to allow residential. So that's not a solution. We signed off, Maui Tomorrow signed off on that order because the developer was trying to get away with building a massive shopping center there. They are shopping center developers, that's what they do. The Land Use Commission had also rejected their environmental impact statement because of their failure to disclose impact. We were able to stop that plan then with the help of the community, which is not a vocal minority. It's a large community, and this is one of the most popular issues. People do not want a mega mall or any kind of major retail there, especially with large road frontage. So the way we stopped it was by agreeing to the Land Use Commission Order that they would go back to their original industrial plan. Not that we wanted industrial, but that was the best we could do because of all the fighting we were getting from the developers. I want to make it clear that Maui Tomorrow will not tam in the way of residential on this land. We will be happy to cooperate in modifying the Land Use Commission Order so that the community can have what it wants there, which is affordable housing. You don't need small town center to do that. Residential will work, and we will support that at the LUC. We support the South Maui community in putting affordable housing there, not small town center. Small town center is one of the most intense urban designations, allows the highest density, and would pull business away from the town center in Kihei that the South Maui community is trying to create. And I'll stop there. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for your testimony. Questions for the testifier? Commissioner Lindsay.
Not a question, more like a comment. Thank you for the background on that. There's kind of holes in everyone's story, so it's good that everyone's saying something to kind of complete the story here. Thank you.
Uh, I do have a question. So we've heard from representative from Pilani Promenade who said they would do a majority residential and if possible, say eighty percent. So how do you feel about that?
The same way I felt about many of the other promises from developers. The same way I felt about the original Kaona Ulu Ranch getting the urban designation and promising an industrial subdivision, which was needed at the time to service the Wailea Hotels. That didn't last. They sold it to somebody else. And they tried to shoehorn it in using exceptions and this and that, and I don't trust anything that is not written in stone. But even if they do small town center, they could do some really high density that would not be appropriate. And just as, just as they're trying to do now with Wailea 670, they make a promise, and then they come back and they modify later. So we don't believe that at all.
Okay, I have a second question. So we just heard from a resident who lives very close to here, who said it would be nice to have some degree of commercial activity in this area so that they wouldn't have to drive further south, that they could be basically right across the street from their house to access, you know, those simple kinds of shops, not have to go all the way further into Kihei, it would alleviate traffic. And this is from, you know, again, somebody who actually lives right there. So what's your feeling about that?
I mean, that's fine. You know, one option that you have, you don't have to designate the entire eighty-eight acres as one thing. So if you want to make a little bit of a neighborhood village or something, village center on one corner of the property, you could do that. But I would caution you to not use a designation that allows region-serving commercial. That's what small town center is gonna do for you. There are several designations that limit the type of commercial to neighborhood serving. And that's what I would recommend. So don't, don't consider it as one block. You can chop it up, designate. There's multiple parcels in there. You can be creative.
Okay, and do you live here in South Maui?
I do not, but I go there a lot.
Okay. All right. That's all my questions. Anybody else have any questions for a testifier? Okay, Singnan, thank you for your testimony.
Thank you, Chair.
And that is our last testifier for this evening. We've gone a little bit past five o'clock. Hopefully, everybody can still chime into the budget meeting. And otherwise, our next meeting will be two weeks from now. Or actually, it's gonna be three weeks from now, I think, because of how the month lines up. But Planning Department, is there anything that you have to announce?
Thank you, Chair. Just a reminder to commissioners, should please do your homework and watch the Housing Forum from the South Maui Advisory Committee. The link was in the memo, was attached to the agenda.
Okay. Thank you. And then Commissioners, is there any follow-up questions you have for the department as we prepare for the next meeting? Okay, so I think we'll have largely the same agenda, since we didn't actually get to action. So we'll have this opportunity all over again. So thank you, everybody, for sticking with us for this wonderful long day. That's not as long, actually, as our days have been and could be. So hopefully you all have time to enjoy your evening still yet. My kids just came home, and I hope you all go back to your families and see you next time. Ahuiho.